Alright, so go to approval of the agenda. Issues with the agenda submitted.
Who do approve?
I support.
Support.
All in favor?
Alright.
The proposal is not approved. Okay, so move to call the public and prior to going into that, just like introduce Doug here. He was at one of our visioning sessions during those, when we had those master plan and I don't, Doug, if you want to say a few words.
Well, my name is Doug Luhan. I am the planning consultant with Carla Wortman Associates. Unfortunately Zach left us to go to work for Canton Township. And I've been with Carla Wortman for thirty years and been in planning about thirty-four years. So hopefully I can fill in.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, we'll move to call the public then.
Call the public, is that, or are we gonna intertwine that with the master plan? I mean the utilities fields with that? That would be two separate issues.
If you had something on it, go ahead.
I just got the comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
We got this table Canada Day, I understand. Scott Dietrich, why they broke. I saw in the new city, I'm against the field. I'm not against solar, I'm not against wind. But I saw a thing that really blows my mind. They're, they're showing a train going down a track laying solar panels in between the tracks. And it's something new there. It actually lays it down from the track car. So it's flat. Okay, so I don't want a field pole here, but I'm thinking if they're gonna force us to put this in fields, if the state so, if the state comes down on this, we have plenty of state that runs down twenty-three there. If they can lay it flat, they could actually put them in the banks of our, where the bridge is called more library. They could lay, and that'll be in the state and it won't be in our, it's right on, and it'll be in an area where I don't think it'd bother me. Because they actually all interconnected all the way down next to us. Hundreds of miles. So that might be something you could look at too. Since they're gonna do them in the railroad track. There's, like I said, I'm not against roads. I'm not against windmills, I just don't see six million of them. But in appropriate spots. But like I said, I've seen there's a lot of people against it, a lot of people are for it. But I think like anything else is a spot for it. And I was really shocked when I saw them, like, because they were talking about hiding a claim when they get snow and they said they're gonna build, they got a way to keep it clean. So I don't know. But it was really neat how the trains was going on, the stuff was just coming out and laying down. So I was getting there locking them in. So, but it's gonna be something to look into. But we don't, we don't have to worry about here, we can, we can turn it around. But they said that would do about, that would handle about two percent of our energy. Just a riddle. That's a lot. So that would probably help. Some people are against solar, so I mean, other than that, that's, I saw that, I just thought I'd share it. Whether it comes to be or not. But like I said, like it's, I could say a while it has to happen in the township. You know, there's, there's probably places where, but I don't wanna see a section and a half of fields of it. It looks stupid. So alright guys.
Thanks Scott.
Janayrope head of Tyrone Township. I also represent the group Tyrone Township Watch. Two quick things. I was sorry to hear that Zach Michael left and won't be working with our township anymore. Have no idea. Well, I might know how to get hold of him now, but I just wanted if he's listening perchance, I'd just like to thank him for all he's done for our community. For his willingness to explain things to me and others. And he will be missed. And that being said, welcome Doug. And look forward to hearing what you have to present tonight and the meetings going forward. Second, I'd really like to thank you, the planning commission. I know, surprise, surprise, but I really felt like last week was a really excellent meeting. And thank you Rich. I appreciate how you ran the meeting, the tone that you set and the questions that you answered. And also to Ross, thank you. He did an excellent job. He, you know, covered for Zach. You guys know this, but people that maybe aren't here don't know. But he helped guide us through some of those discussions that Zach would have been leading. So thanks again Ross. I know it may not always seem like you guys are appreciated, but you are. And all of you that were here last week really demonstrated that you wanna work with the community and engage. And I just, I thought it was a really great meeting. So again, I just, I just appreciate your efforts. The one thing I know is that we, especially from last week, hearing you guys talk, we have a lot of things that we all agree on and that we have in common. We're not gonna agree on everything, but the fact that, you know, you can be transparent and talk about things and explain your positions. I think that that just means the world to the community. I know it does to me to just, you know, hear how you feel about things and be able to talk about them. But most of all, so that we can discuss things early and head things off before they happen. So again, I really, I do appreciate you guys. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment for this time? Okay, so now we'll move to old business, item number one, which is master plan. The next spot where we're currently at is the existing land use. And there were many different contexts here of what we put into the reverberage in the master plan. What it boiled down to, we were looking at this where we left off and there was multiple different items that maybe, you know, certain updates we've had. I don't know if we have a list compiled yet, but I know as a planning commission, if you guys have any ones that you've seen that are incorrect, be a good time to make a list. I know Ross, you had compiled one list at one time.
Yeah, I gave those to Zach, so he does have it.
Doug? The spot here at Old Twenty-three faucet was rezoned.
Yeah, probably a good way to do that is if you do have time outside of the meeting after, after this evening. If you have a chance to go through it, make notes, email it to me. I can send it to Doug, make sure that everything's covered.
Question I have Ross is like the, on some of the lots, if, if, you know, they may be shown as vacant on it and it may be farming right now. So wait, and for the purposes of what we're trying to do, does it matter? Like, like this one though is, is vacant, but it's farming is what it's being used for, because it's actually actively being farmed. And similar to other, but some of them are maybe they're farming, but they're labeled as vacant. I didn't know, I don't have information, what we, what we feel on that, how we wanna designate it here for us to look at. That's the only one big question I had about a lot of these parcels.
I went through a lot of that and there, there aren't any huge conflicts. The ones that show vacant are literally vacant with no structures on it. Some of the ones that are green for farming residential are developed. And then the ones that are yellow within the farming residential area, those are just primarily smaller sized lots that do a single family homes on them. So for the most part, I found that to be accurate. There's a few areas that, you know, we can tweak, but that's not a huge concern, I don't believe.
And a lot of this will...
We're looking at some of the more...
So the only question I had on was this green one here Ross.
So that's Lake Tyrone Association owned property?
Okay.
The green is recreational open space. It's not used for anything. It's swampland. So I believe when, this is all SenCo data, right?
Yep.
So they just got the data from the aerials, saw that it wasn't being utilized and it's considered open space, I assume.
Why wouldn't the Bowman's Club be under that category?
Bowman's Club is technically commercial.
Really? Don't we consider that a campground? Well, or is it just grandfathered?
It's grandfathered right now. They haven't made any changes. It's been there forever. Prior to the zoning ordinance required anything for it.
Is that this?
Is that big red?
Just the big red one right here?
Used to be the backside of the table, you know? Don't use to go all the way through?
Yeah, is that? Yeah, that's all the kind of thing like that. Like is that commercial or is that a? You know, something to talk about.
Good point Gary.
You know, if we're...
To the back piece of it, yeah.
Yeah, and that's just existing use. That's not saying that something else commercial could move in there. Because it is still currently zoned as FAR. So any type of commercial use were rezoning and the likelihood of that particular property being rezoned for, you know, more intensive use is probably slim.
And other than that Ross, I think the only one is this, I think these are farming right now. Is it this? I'd have to double check it Ross, but. No, that's, this is south of the townhouse.
That's where that boat dealer is very, very down there.
Action here, I think on this small lot, but then I could be mixing up my locations also.
We're, we're, right.
North of Dean.
North of Dean, okay. Action is gonna be the one right on the corner there.
Yeah. Yeah, and then bust story.
So that, those two could be.
About at the southeast corner of Linden and Dean is blue. I, I don't even know if that really has a...
That one I did point out to Zach. We don't know what exactly is going on. What, he's even trying to designate the, because it doesn't show up on the key.
I think it should be green.
Yeah. Yep. And then there's, there's a few other mixed use ones. Like there's a property on faucet there that's agriculture. But it is indicated as mixed use, you know, because they have a lot of equipment and whatnot out there.
Is that a farm?
Calhoun.
Okay, okay.
Linden and Dean, is that a pond that pays into Lake Sham?
There is a pond there, yeah. That's what that parcel is, but.
Yeah, that's where our old guy that used to do your job lives.
Yep.
It's a bunch of houses in there. At, uh, White.
Ross, I think, yeah, well, it looks like we got a lot, um, maybe each one of us have some, compile all this stuff. I know I did a few.
Yeah, if there's anything that really stands out, like I said, I did pass that information along, but I can take a look at all the comments that you provide and kind of, you know, cut out the redundancy and create one complete list.
And then, just the comment, maybe you have some of these commercial ones down here and here. Ross, do you know when those were established?
Uh, that one's, uh, at the training post. That was around ninety-nine. That's part of the PUD there.
That's a storage, foster store, did it?
No.
That one's not on there. That's gonna show up as, uh,
That's not it?
Just ag right now. No, that one is set in training post. The trailer says.
What's that one there?
That one right there is a propane, suburban propane. The one directly south of it, my indication also be a commercial. That is the agriculture.
Ortruce?
Yes.
Yeah, these were. Is that, that's for, is that?
It's a rocher, yeah. That, that needs to be commercial.
That's who's gonna do the block where they did Tyrone. I figured we'd need him. That's who's doing the, the town.
I, I don't either.
That's the historical society's deal, line that up.
I think they're lining it up. Res zoning for some rock church.
Okay, yeah.
Well, I know nothing about that.
Yeah, Ross, another historical, Kurt pointed out, recent, in the last five years, the rock church moved. So that one shows as vacant.
That one should be noted.
Yeah, would that change automatically or do, do they have to commit and apply for a zoning change?
This is not a zoning map.
Well, it's not a zoning map, you're right.
Yeah, this is just designating their accounting for what we already have.
So by the, for this, I think if all of us take time, we could probably all, between all of us, we could have a list of the items that we need to correct by the next regular meeting. It'd probably be good. That way we, we don't continue doing this in our meetings and talking about it.
I got one more question. That, that lot there north of White Lake that we had Wilson in here for, the, with the?
This here?
What are we, I mean, I see a little square for waterways. Is that what we're designating as just the water part? Or are we gonna expand that?
It doesn't have blue. There's about four, there's like three that I see that are blue. It doesn't.
Oh, and there's no key.
Yeah. Small section there, there's more water than just that. Like what are we, even on the new map, what, what are we gonna qualify that? Or is that done by Eagle?
Well, again, this is not zoning or going to affect the zoning. This is just accounting for what, what the current uses are. So that one being vacant, I believe is, is appropriate. It does have a lot of RUs assessed to it. You know, it's been designated by the township for development for many years, so.
Yeah, Gary, I think what you're saying is future land use.
Yeah.
And then I think there's a couple here Ross. I think these would be single family here, these two little lots. I know one came to the CBA maybe in January, you know, maybe it was last year.
Those are the things that will...
But wait, I'll put them in the list.
Especially the residential stuff.
Yeah. So from a timing perspective, I think we were doing this and then the next part of the master plan was future land use map. And that, from where we left off with Zach. You know, we still wanna go through the articles and, you know, for sure. So I don't know, Doug, would that be adequate to plan for the next regular meeting for us as a planning commission?
Yeah, we can talk a little bit about, to go through those. Talk a little bit about tonight. The existing land use stuff, just, just as a little background, there's a couple of things I need to point out in the existing land use section that was provided. But first, just a little perspective on this map and how you, you gotta remember, you gotta take a step back and think about how the community, how residents, perspective developers with this map, again, it's not the zoning maps, not the future land use map. It's a snapshot map that SenCo has developed. We didn't develop this map. This is a map that they developed based on aerial photography primarily. And they, they categorize what they're seeing in aerial photography, whether it's residential, vacant, agricultural. So you're right, some of these things are very likely agricultural, but their aerial photograph didn't quite pick it up that way. They picked up as just vacant. So we'll make those tweaks and changes. But people who use this map, you know, this is, to me, when I look at existing land, if, if I was looking at a rezoning, this is kind of the general overview of, okay, what does this part of the township look like? Okay, a lot of large lots, whether they're vacant or agricultural, it gives you, it gives you a kind of perspective on what's happening in the community in that spot. Now, if there was truly a rezoning happening, we're not just gonna rely on this map. You know, somebody, we or you or both of us are gonna go out to the site, look at the site, see what's around it. If there's, if there's inconsistencies or some problems with this map, again, this is, this is a general overview of what's happening on the ground now. Do you wanna make it as perfect as possible? Yes, we do wanna make it as perfect as possible. But this doesn't dictate reality. Like, we go out there and actually check the site. Okay, the master plan's gone, this is, that's not gonna really affect how we review a rezoning or a site or something like that. Trying to make it as, as good as possible, but just, you gotta, you gotta take a step back and think of how is this map used? Just used to give us, you know, a general feel for what's happening. I'll tell you another thing. You know, we use SenCo now, and I'm gonna talk about that problem with using SenCo. But, you know, years ago, when we did existing land use maps, how we do them is we would drive, we had two people in a car. We'd drive every road in the township. One person driving, one person taking notes. We actually list what, okay, left side, right side, ag, 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 single family, commercial. So you'd physically be out there running it. As you can imagine, that's a very time intensive and expensive process, because it'd take a couple, you know, a couple several days to do that. And so now to kind of avoid that expense for many years, not just Tyrone Township, but most communities, use SenCo. So, and it is, it is, obviously, we, I was used, download the information, you're done. You know, you don't have to go and do field verify, but we would actually do Winchell survey, field verify the entire community. And that's one way to do it, but very expensive and time consuming. Now, SenCo is fine, again, to get this kind of snapshot of what's happening in the community. The problem, as you can see on page nine dash two of what was provided to you, is that in two thousand one, a previous planner, McKenna Associates, provided acreage comparison of existing land use within the township. And then in two thousand eight, SenCo provided acreage comparison of what's in the township. And then in two thousand twenty, we have the new SenCo standards. And if you, if you looked at this, this, what's called table nine point three, in this draft section of the existing land use plan, these numbers are wildly different. And the township didn't change that much. What changes is the way that, what changes is the way that SenCo reported these things. And so generally speaking, if you look at, two thousand eight, SenCo had five thousand five hundred eighty-eight acres in agriculture. And they had sixteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-three acres in single family residential. Well, in two thousand twenty, single family residential went down to two thousand nine hundred sixty-one acres, the way they reported it. And agriculture went up thirteen thousand five hundred eighty-one. Well, obviously what, what SenCo did is they rejiggered this and they put more property that was previously calculated with single family category to the agricultural category. And so these comparisons from two thousand one, two thousand eight to two thousand twenty are not, they can't be compared because SenCo so drastically changed the way that they report this data. So unless you just want it for nostalgic purposes, the two thousand one and two thousand eight is just not used. It's not a compare, it's not comparative data to two thousand twenty. I would recommend just removing it, to be honest. And just kind of start off with two thousand twenty. This is what we have now. Maybe we can find, SenCo changed the way they did data collection probably about ten years ago. So we might be able to find, if we can find the first year that they changed the system and compare it to now, we might have a rational way to compare it. But trying to compare it to the previous map, previous two master plans, it, it just looks too weird. I mean, there's, obviously, single family residential didn't go down, you know, twelve thousand acres in Tyrone Township between two thousand eight and two thousand, or two thousand twenty. So that's what, as I'm, as I was looking through this, I think we, I would propose that to the planning commission, that we somehow make a more rational comparison. If we can find some SenCo data from two thousand ten or when they first changed this, I think that would be a better approach than trying to compare it to the previous master plans. It just doesn't work. So I throw that out there, maybe as a first discussion point, if you guys kind of...
Oh, just a, a thought on that. Ross, do, would this successor have any data on this?
I would not.
Based on how the, okay.
Yeah, not, not that type of data.
Yeah.
It, it just, it provides a picture to the users of the master plan. It's just not, you know, it's just not accurate. So that's what I would propose and we will try to do that. We'll try to correct that, that situation. Other than that, I mean, the, and just a little snapshot of what's going on, I don't know if Zach has gone over this stuff with you, but we did do some acreage analysis based on what the, what SenCo did provide. And I think it's interesting to know, the two thousand twenty data, if you include agricultural rural residential with vacant, that's seventy-three percent of the township as in rural residential or vacant. So basically agricultural vacant, that's seventy-three percent of the current, current Tyrone Township. If you add single family housing into that, it gets up to eighty-six percent. The next highest category after single family housing is roads. So road right of way. The next highest category after that is water. So if you take multifamily, according to SenCo data, if you take multifamily institutional, which is this building and places like this, industrial, commercial, currently that only represents three percent of Tyrone Township. So the vast majority of the township is found in agriculture, vacant, or residential, which comprises eighty-six percent. The next highest category, interestingly enough, is basically road right of way. Transportation, communication, utilities. So again, that, that's when these kind of data, this kind, these kind of numbers become useful to the users of the master plan. And it kind of get, you start to get a picture of, okay, what's happening on the ground right now in the township. And that starts, and these numbers, I know as we go through here, there are some blank spots that were not filled in yet. But we've, we've got a lot of this data corrected or done at this point. We just didn't provide it in the document that we have.
Yeah, there's a lot of graphs and summaries.
So the, you know, the, oh, and also there's the subareas that are included in part of your, in your master plan. We've actually have, that data's also been kind of crunched. We have each subarea has been crunched as far as acreages and what's in each subarea, which will include that as well. Existing land use section, other than, frankly, other than correcting the map as the planning commission now pointed out, it's not, you know, it's kind of a, don't wanna say it's a dry section, but it is, it's an important section because it gives you a snapshot of what's happening on the ground right now. But it's a section that, once we can all agree on all of the parcels, it's really a section that should be, it should, it should be something everyone can agree about. You know, this is how, this is what's happening right now on the ground. This is kind of a dry section. There's really not a lot to it. But, you know, there's a little work that went into it. But anyway, that, that's my thought.
This is not a controversial section. Yeah, so for this point where we're at, are you waiting on any items from Ross as a planning commission at this point? I just wanna make sure if there is something we understand.
Just the map stuff, we can try to correct, we can try to brush the map up and then we, once we have the map, the map brushed up, we can reach into the acreage, all acreage comparisons. I can't imagine they're gonna change a whole lot, but they'll, they'll change a little bit. And no, I think we're good. This section is pretty much good to go. Unless there's anything you guys are thinking of.
I got a question for you, right up there on the overview. The way I'm looking at this, it says most common, largest increase, largest decrease, details by region, okay? Most common, for example, what are we asking on that? And I'm looking at that from the perspective, if I look at that now, the most common I am on there is agricultural. But that's not where the population lives. The population lives in a single family. And that's really the most common, because there are more people in single family places than there are in the rural farming. So are we asking what the largest, what the most common is, is where the population is, isn't it?
What, what, I think what this was trying to describe is the, I don't think most common is probably not a good way to say it, but it was trying to say, what is the, we're talking about land use.
Right, you're talking about land use.
It's not about the people, it's about the land.
But there's more people using the land in single family.
But there's more area that's used.
Right, but, no, so there, there's two definitions there. You really need to say what it is we're asking. Is, is it a land use by the population or a land use expanse in the county?
Existing land use is typically acreage. It's just a description of acreage. I mean, we could talk about where, you know, where residents are located. That's not a difference, that's a kind of a way we could slice it to kind of show that.
You know, cause I hate to pick at things, but that's a, that's a question that I didn't understand just by reading it as to what, what we're mentioning is the most and the largest increase and the largest decrease. You could have ninety people move out of a house, and there could be houses, and that could be a decrease in the population. Or you could have a decrease in the land use expanse.
Yeah, that, that kind of decrease in population would be reflected in the existing, uh, like housing population section.
Right, and we've had an increase in population, so I guess, I was looking at increase on that.
Yeah, this is, this typically is specific to acreage, you know, we're talking about acreage. What's the biggest acreage gains, what's the biggest acreage losses? Typically, when residential goes up, agricultural goes down, and that, that's the kind of trends we're trying to.
So if we have, if we had an increase in single family dwellings, is that the largest increase in the county, in the county, the township?
If, if those single family homes took up a lot of acreage, it could be. You're gonna, you're gonna find increases in single family homes in the population section of the master plan. Not necessarily in existing land use section of the master plan. Like, there'll be a whole description of housing, population, people per household, and how many households in. That sort of thing.
Cause we're, we're never gonna have an increase in the, uh, agricultural end of things. I mean, that's, that's not gonna increase, that's gonna decrease.
That's always gonna go down, but yeah, I presume that will.
Right, and you're limited by, there's so much land in the coun, in the township, and that's it.
Unless something hurts to a.
Yeah, go for vacant department.
To, you, then you wouldn't change, like, if the land use of this were of course is changed to agriculture use.
Right.
You'd have a huge increase in, in agriculture.
It's trending.
No, but it's not a example. It's not, the category's not just agricultural, it's agricultural slash rural residential. So if a vacant parcel, someone built one house there, then that, that'll all go down.
Right.
So that's, well, that agricultural slash rural residential, so that can go up.
You could also have the gravel pits turned into lakefront property here.
That'd be, uh, local family.
Yeah.
Oh, or would that be, would that be like?
But all this is doing, as Doug said, you guys is showing, hey, what is currently, what is the land useful? The lecture, not how many people are there, it's just what is it useful?
A snapshot, snapshot of today, of what's on.
Of the land use for today.
But it's strictly the land, we're not looking at the population, we're not looking at an increase, a decrease. It's just a picture of what, what the dirt looks like.
Yes, and, and that, those points that you're bringing up are important, but they're in a different part of the master plan. They're, they're the whole housing.
Okay, so that's why I need to know for.
I see your point, the, the, this, it would have, it's under land use, but like this largest increase in land use would make it.
Percentage by acre.
But this was just bullet points for.
Right.
The active placehold for.
Right, but what I was looking at was what data's going in there.
Yeah, yeah, that may, yeah, for sure.
Nice question, Ryan, yeah. Since it's a workshop. What do you guys consider ag when it's residential, how large of a property does it have to be to be considered ag?
Well, I think this is, we don't have a.
Well, I know you're talking ag, so I wanna know all these.
No, it's not, um, zoned that way, this was just the way, we talked about it in one of the workshops with Zach. It was just a way we, to say, hey, this isn't, it isn't just an open lot doing nothing. There's people farming on it.
Shouldn't we have a guideline, what's, it, it's gotta be so many acres to be considered ag? I mean, you know.
This here is just saying, hey, the use of it is agriculture.
Well, that's what I was asking, that's, even if it's five acres, it's gotta be tend to be ag, then it's not ag.
Yeah, you can't, you can't limit, and that's getting into a little bit of a more specific session with regard to zoning. Because there's the Right to Farm Act, and basically you could, technically you could farm on an acre. And if you, if you were doing something.
So you can do, so everybody can have a, a first hand on their yard.
Well, if you, if you are, the Right to Farm Act has no minimum acreage. And so technically you could farm on an acre, and if you could make money on the acre, you'd be protected under the Right to Farm Act.
Yeah, just for profit, right? And that's, that's the, that's what I'm doing.
Yeah.
Now, could you actually do an acre, probably not, so, and practically speaking.
Basically just hobby.
But you could certainly attempt it and file it, correct?
Yeah, and someone could have two acres and say they're doing herbs, which doesn't take up a lot of work. And if they're making money on that, technically they're protected under the Right to Farm Act. And they don't have to file locals on it, they could just do it, and that's.
Thanks, huh? Yours.
Isn't this just like a planning piece for us?
Yeah, this is, yeah, just to show, yeah, white, double, for a snatch.
We're not bombed by this, this is just sort of weapons piece.
This helps, so the existing land use is one of those parts that helps you develop the rest of the plan. You know, it's kind of like, kind of like population, kind of like, you know, even your public vision accessions. You know, you get, you get the input, you know, survey residents, you get input from residents, you've got that bit of information. Now you've got the existing land use bit of information, you've got the population growth bit of information, you've got transportation bit of information. The hope, the hope is that you bring all those little bits of information, and it starts to form your goals and policies of your master plan, future land use part of your master plan, and that's, that's all. Thanks.
So, yeah, so I guess our hallmark is planning issues. I gotta, you know, go through this to get a, write up lists.
A weird question, but how is the farm act, could somebody come in on something that's completely unrelated, and we start saying they're gonna set a farm up there, and it goes, the, our, our zoning doesn't apply to that, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Really?
So that's on, that's on food standards, septic requirements, pesticides herbicides, C regulations, hazardous material transportation, and cherry regulations, so those are what, uh, those are some local regulations that are over.
Overized.
Overright.
No, not to, not to go down too much of a, a rabbit hole, but, um, Right to Farm Act also has what's called general accepted agricultural management practices, or GAMS. And so if you go on the Michigan Department Agriculture website, uh, and look, and there'll be, there'll be a list of what they call GAMS. And those are little separate PDF documents that talk about different types of farming activities. And so while not regulated by a local municipality, a farmer would have to, one, be making money to be considered under the Right to Farm Act, uh, but they also have to make the GAMS. So there are things, so the GAMS standards do have things like setbacks and certain amount of area for certain kinds of animals. So the state of Michigan has, uh, in, in, kind of inserted their own rules for, uh, locals. And this is one of those preemptions of local, uh, you know, it's a preemption of locals on it. This is, there's, there's a number, but this is just one.
And we did use GAMS to model our keeping of animal standards for those who work for that.
Just bees, we looked at a lot of bees and.
We, we modeled them based off of that, and we did include references to, you know, potential changes in future. Yeah, there's less than.
I don't, yeah, it's like, wow, that sounds like a rule, like I do this stuff, tend to run.
So what I'm hearing, Doug, is from us, it's the existing land use map, and then for the next regular meeting, hopefully we can compile lists, and maybe we can give them to Ross, and Ross can have a list, one list.
As soon as you can get them to me?
That's, that's what I mean, yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna get them over to Doug.
That way it's one solid combined, but it's not, uh.
Putting together ten of them, we all send separately.
Yes, and we'll try to add, wherever you see a highlighted yellow section, we'll try to have that fleshed out a little bit better.
So we're, we're looking at the yellow highlights on some of these things, like nine point three is the land use in Tyrolean Township, two thousand one to two thousand twenty, and you have the graphs and the summaries of the land uses and changes.
Yes. Yep.
Yeah, I got it, exactly, yes.
Any other questions?
Playing issue as well?
Yes, everyone. Not on the existing. Okay, any on the future?
So many open spots in the, the future.
Yeah, the future, so I, I, I thought it was instructive for me, cause I'm kind of new here, but I don't know how people can see this or not, but this is the, um, this is the current future land use map from, uh, the previous planner a few years ago from the Ken Associates. And I think it's a good, a good place to start. So, you know, in, in planning, in a master plan, um, you know, this is kind of the, I don't know if you guys can see this.
Yeah.
But this is kind of where, the future land use document, you've got two really important parts of the document. You've got the, uh, goals and policies, so, and that kind of tells, that gives the written text part of what the township's trying to accomplish. And then you have the map, the map and the text that goes along with the map. But the, the, so where the, say where the rubber hits the road is this map really, and, and the goals and policies. So what happens is, uh, people who use the master plan, whether it's planning commission, township board, uh, residents, developers, you know, first thing they're gonna do is to say, what, you know, if they know what they're talking about with planning zoning, is they're gonna say, what does the master plan say? And they're not gonna read your hundred page document, they're gonna go to this map. And, um, if you are, uh, if you're taking a court on your, on land use decisions, this is gonna be a primary exhibit A, you know, now, now, they will look at the whole document in that case, but this is gonna be a very important part of, of the discussion. And it should be a very important part of discussion for any rezoning, PUD, anything that comes up for you guys, as well as the goals and policies. So this is your existing future land use map. And I think I was, I was talking to Ross a little bit before the meeting, um, this was, this is, this is a certain style. And I guess we can go, we'll go through the categories, I think Zach did a pretty good job with the categories. And, and, and if you have any comments on those, we'll talk about them, but, um, this is a certain style of master plan. I've done one like this, and I've done other, another style. This is, I call this kind of a more organic, uh, boundaries of a master plan. As you can see, the, the boundaries are not like a zoning, they're kind of, you know, this is agriculture residential, and it's, you know, kind of amoeba shaped, uh, area, as, as is most of these. A couple of these are more geometric kind of shapes, but for the most part, this master plan was set up to be not a, to be non-property line specific. So, and there's, there's pros and cons to that. The pros are that because it's not property line specific, and say there was a proposal on one of these sort of areas where it's crossing property lines, the planning commission, ultimately the township board, has a little bit more discretion, say, well, this is kind of on the border, it makes sense, maybe you can look at either one side or the other. Or if it's even in the general area. So this, this has some benefits as being a little more flexible for the community. That can cut both ways off, if it's something you don't want, and there's the line that kind of goes nearby or adjacent to it, then, you know, the developer's gonna say, well, it's right next door, and it cuts through the property, and I should be considered this designation, not that designation. So the other, so that's kind of the downside of that. The other way to do a future land use map is, uh, is similar to a zoning map. So your zoning map is very specific, you know, zoning map is on the property lines. You know, it, it goes down, you know, Hartland Road, and then takes a, you know, depending on what the district is, and it follows roads, it follows properties, and that's how zoning is. It's, it's not illegal to have split zoning, but it's not common, and it causes problems. So, uh, this is, if this was zoning, this, there'd be hundreds and hundreds of split zone properties because this splits a ton of properties. A little more flexible, but not specific. If we were to snap these districts to actually property lines, this map would look very different. And at that point, it gives a very specific, uh, map of where, where you guys might wanna go. And there's, it, it takes away some of that flexibility. So I don't know if you, uh, knew that about how the existing master plan map is, but I thought I would point that out and kind of get maybe the feelings about this existing way, this kind of, uh, I call it kind of an organic way that probably, you know, Ross can fill, Ross can kind of maybe fill in the spaces here, but usually maps are done like this to follow, um, natural features, there could be some woodlands or wetlands or steep slopes or something like that, that, that's why it's done that way, I don't know why it's done that way.
That's my understanding, yeah, that's what they were going for.
Yeah, and so in those kind of cases, they think we're not just gonna follow because natural features don't follow property lines necessarily, and so that's why they did it. I've seen, I've seen it either way, and I just wonder what, uh, what your expectation, your thoughts are, knowing that this, I think this is probably the most important map in the entire master plan, and kind of what your thoughts are.
So what are you recommending? You're the, you're the expert.
Yeah, I, uh, I.
But let's, let's put it this way, we've lived with this. We know what the problems are with it, and that's the fact that you're right. Somebody can come in and say, well, we're right next to this, and I wanna own these other pieces of land here, so we wanna put this all in the, the development. That may or may not be the best thing for the township. But I'm wondering what kind of issues we would run into if we had it, I mean, part of the idea is the existing, the future land use map should help us reduce the number of zones that we have within the township to bring that back to a manageable number, because we have way too many, you know, RF, RE, RF, LK one, uh, all those, and get, get that to a manageable number. That's, that's what we'd like to do, we think, unless somebody tells us that that's crazy.
I mean, you could go, it's, it's really your, it's your call, if, if you wanted more zoning districts, you could add more master plan designations. But it's, if that, if the goal is to reduce the number of zoned districts, then yeah, you wanna start the master plan.
That's kind of what we've been looking at, I know that's what Mike is looking at. But I guess the thought with that is, will, will that kind of a plan or map help us to reduce the numbers or not?
No, I, I don't, I think they're two different issues. I think you could have just as many designations with more, the more organic shape, they could just snap into property lines. I don't think that, I don't think that's the issue.
My, my only comment is that, in everything we've heard from the public is we wanna reduce the intensity of use across the board as much as we can. Like, the, the Pyro District is something that's sat there for ten plus years, and we haven't had one, I believe, application. So we're thinking about, kind of taking this high use down as much as we can, and we talked about the areas where we have intense use, like the, um, mobile home parks, whatever they're called nowadays, so we have that covered. I would like to see this done to the point that we're covered if, if we get into a particular legal situation. That's my biggest concern, is if we're gonna take the, the intensity down, that we're covered. And, and I see like that big blue square with the, with the orange around it, I think that should come out, as far as the organic part of it.
Yeah, the only thing that it helps is with this, if you, say you're a property owner, wherever you own, and you have some use you're intending for this property you bought, this doesn't give you a clear direction of what the township's intent is. Where if you go by property line, then you have a clearer message.
As a property owner in that area where that, that organic amoeba is.
Yeah.
I find that to be kind of a bit concerning, cause I wanna know, what am I actually zoning?
Yeah, and that's what I mean, like, so if you're coming in with an application to the planning commission, and you have that map, it's not clear what our intent is as a township.
Right.
And so that, I, my personal opinion is that it should follow the property lines.
I agree.
I know how.
Like you call it property lines, and I, I think we've already talked about this with Zach.
We did.
That was Zach's recommendation.
It's easier to defend.
Yeah, I, I like it, it's just, that's how it's gonna be in the future anyway. When this go, actually goes to become existing land use, it's gonna go right to the property line. When this go, actually goes to become existing land use, it's gonna go right to the property line.
And we are, I mean, there's a lot of people in these townships that own not one, two, three, four. They get up into hundreds and hundreds of acres, and they're hitting almost three different colors. So say that gets sold somewhere down the road, or the developer comes in, and it's in that weird area, then what, we fight over three different colors?
Yeah, like this property here, big property, three colors, and it's like, it's gonna be a lot easier for the developer to say, I want the residential, because it just hits the corner of it.
Right.
I mean, for the reason, I've been in a lot of townships where, you know, the zoning districts will cut through on a certain line, and if you have, have these property, you're kind of into, because you can't, you know. You wouldn't want, you know, for example, industrials, you have a hundred acres, go all the way back to the back of it. If you're on, for example, Runyon Lake Old Twenty Three, but I, I do agree with what you said, Garrett, that clean this up. And when everyone else has cleaned up on the property line as much as they can.
I think that's a good start. And may, maybe there's some middle ground.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, where's there a, a combination, like in some of the areas?
I mean, there's a little bit of a middle ground on the map, the way it is, but, um, maybe there's a way we can make it a little more black and white for, for people.
I think it, it will help, like, you know, like you said, people don't go read our zoning orders. Like Jen, they're gonna go look at a map, and then the clearer the map can be, the better is for, for everybody.
Look at the map, maybe they'll read the goals and policies.
Yeah.
Maybe.
I mean, as someone on the other side of the table, because I was on the other side, side of the table for thirty-five years, we go look at the map. And if it's close, we're like, we'll go, see if we can get it through, go ask for, you know, various.
If there's a loophole, go go for it.
And, you know, that's.
My kids are just regular area.
And, and, you know, it's, it's.
It's where we have those gray areas.
Yeah, I tell you, we go down, Ryan Township or Old Silver Township, but it doesn't look like it did ten years ago, that's for sure.
So for future land use, is there any other, uh, we could have some direction there, and you probably were pending from us. I don't know if there's any other.
Yeah, no, these, uh, Zach simply had the districts laid out, you know, for twelve, I think he did a nice job to districts. Um, uh, the zoning plan on page eleven dash six. Um, there were some, you kind of pointed out some of the previous master plan, um, designations. This is a required part of the ma, of a master plan, having a zoning plan, you have to show what your master plan dis, what zoning ordinance or two, what zoning district specifically. Uh, relates to the master plan district, which is done here. Um, yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't have any other thoughts. He did, and towards the end of this, on page eleven dash seven, he talked about some special planning areas. And, um, uh, he had those highlighted, the golf course, the former Pyro section, the triangle between Old US Twenty Three and Fenton. Um, I am still getting off the speed with some of the issues in Tyrone Township, so I don't, maybe Ross, you know what he's talking about here?
Um, as far as these highlighted sections?
They're, they're on the map, I mean, the two, the Pyro and the other section are highlighted.
The Pyro, the general consensus was, we may want to take a look at what all of our other zoning districts allow for, as far as their M1 and 2, those type of heavier use districts. As well as, uh, you know, the districts that may allow for office-type uses, and potentially remove the Pyro section and replace it with whatever seems to be more appropriate.
Yeah.
Um, as far as the golf course area, um, I do not recall, I do know that he wanted to discuss a little bit more about the here. Designated special, uh, planning area, which is that triangle between Old Twenty Three and Fenton. We didn't really get too in-depth on those topics, um.
Yeah.
I, I think that he wanted to get a little bit more info from the planning commission, uh, have a little bit more discussion on those topics.
Yeah, the only item on the golf course we talked about, I forget what its existing designation is, but was that. It would be something where we, we zoned it, and we wanna keep it as preservation and whatever, not, or recreational, not. That they can sell it and become industrial or, or something, but I think was kind of how the discussion went, but, yeah, well.
Okay, I think we should severely reduce or eliminate the high-density residential. That's up, that's, uh, up to eight dwellings per acre, which I just don't think fits in the township.
Is that possible to completely eliminate, or?
No, but we, we still have it, we just don't show a space for future land use for it.
Yeah, and I think a lot of the articles, what, what Zach was, the data that he had for the Malone Parks in here was. Was kind of where that was kind of geared for, right? It was showing like the, if it's not in here, but the data compared to other townships, like percentage of use. It's in the housing articles, but.
We have more, we already have more.
Sufficient to cover.
We don't have a whole lot of multifamily.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, NHP is multifamily, but it is also kind of its own category.
Yeah.
Well, and we, we asked Zach to take a look at some things to help protect this. One was a tree ordinance, another one was a dark skies, another one was the medicine issue. And solar farming, we were already gonna look at here, so.
That, that's elsewhere.
Yeah.
Well, that, that's, uh, at this point, that's all I've got.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you.
Go to old business item number two, which is, uh, we talked about it last meeting, great, great. Livingston County did a courtesy review of basically the context of it, make sure we're. And they recommended, I don't know, there's a lot of, I don't know, but, basically that we. The summary of what we talked about in the last meeting was that we should not include FR in the permitted use for solar. So I don't know if everybody had time to look at it, but I had, I went through it and, basically in the, here, this would be. Deleted, right, the FR section, and then this here, it, it talks about the front yard setback and the.
Wasn't that kind of the bottom, right, we got others, kind of restrictive or considerate?
Yeah, that was the summary of what we have all talked about, but from a.
It was really the, that's the only point that we really discussed, there's a lot more comments in here that we kind of wanna go through and. Get them all sown, so that we can start to put together a draft document. So, I, I would think at this point, what we'd wanna do is, uh, we did already talk a little bit about the FR, and we got the general consensuses. If that is possible to remove from that district, because it is allowed for in a number of other districts, then we, we'd wanna do that. Uh, but beyond that, we do have additional comments that I think we, we wanna discuss, uh, just so, you know, we can start putting together a draft. Which won't be that difficult, I mean, we do have a good framework right now, so it's really just plugging in and removing certain.
The only thought I had was in this first section here. I don't know if you've had Doug any experience with this yet, in any of the townships, but if you put a statement in the beginning of the. Let's see where it is, right here, right, under the subsection that. That's, this use shall be limited to these zoning districts, let's say, is that.
Is addressed elsewhere, um, so if we are to do this, then we also need to amend the special land use article to.
Okay, yeah.
And, and various tables.
Wherever we reference this solar.
Right, fine, okay.
Yeah, good point, Ross.
So, I mean, I, I can kind of go through this and bring up some of the points if you'd like.
Yeah.
So the, the first comments that we have here is gonna be on the, the second page, uh, getting into staff comments. Um, they're suggesting that, uh, we should clarify how the setbacks are measured, um, in this table here, or as a footnote to this table. Um, we do indicate that it's, it's co, it's consistent everywhere that we use the same methods of setback measurements. It is defined in Article Two and in various other sections of zoning ordinance, so. I, I don't know personally, I don't have an opinion either way, whether or not you wanted to add additional clarification here in this section, if it's really necessary.
As far as, are they measured from the property line?
From the right of way.
Okay, so.
That's our clarification, but it is all over the zoning ordinance, so. I personally don't, I feel like it's not redundant, but maybe unnecessary in this section, but I wanted to.
Yeah, the only thing is like, like, okay, setbacks from water on the ordinary high-water market and then the property line, I don't know.
So it is. It's just like another areas of the zoning ordinance.
So then we're fine.
I, I would see that.
The next one, Ross.
Yeah, moving on to, uh, page three here. We have a comment, uh, the township reevaluated, including FR, that's the one that we did discuss already, and I got the general consensus is, if that's an option, then. That's what we would wanna do.
Okay.
So page four just continues on the, the intent of the zoning districts, um. They, they just go on to comment that PCI and some of the Pyro districts, specifically Pyro B, Pyro C, would be more suitable. Uh, than the FR-type zoning district.
Okay.
We have a comment here regarding the category of PUDs. Um, use of PUD process encouraged for sites larger than twenty acres. Typically, utility solar facilities are much lar, larger than twenty acres in area. Additional flexibility to the development and design process, and further enable coordination among various onsite users. So I don't know if you have any thoughts on, on that, on the PUD aspect of it.
Hey Ross, I got a question, I didn't see it in here, but, um, you know, you're talking about a lot of hard surface now. I didn't see anything here on like detention basins or retention basins or something like that.
Yeah, it gets into drainage.
It does, okay, I didn't, I'm, I'm not so, so I was reading through it, but yes. Because that seems like you're putting a lot of hard surface potential.
Yeah.
You add it in this section and, you know.
Hey Doug, I got a question too, I mean, are you seeing people, districts, committees fighting this much, or has that not come up yet?
Um, yeah, there's some, there's some communities, definitely communities fighting it.
Yes.
Um, there's a, there's a couple of communities that see that, that the huge utility scale ones are, you know, can really change the character of the community.
Absolutely.
And, uh, uh, some communities are more positive towards a little smaller scale, like twenty acre and larger, smaller. But when you start getting into like a thousand acres, that, you know, people are, you know, concerned.
Say, on a township is one of the ones, it's like, so is Birch Run, too.
So, um, but yes.
And Conway and Cohoctiff. Conway.
The, um, you know, the stormwater, the stormwater runoff thing isn't necessarily as big of a problem as you might think. Because there's nothing underneath them, and the water's just running off the panels and going underground where it was going before. So it's not as if there's a concrete base, they're just stuck in the ground with poles. And so the water runs off the panel, hits the ground, that's where it was going, that's where the water was going anyway, and so it's then just absorbed into the ground like it was.
Nice radiate.
There's really not much additional.
Because those are changing from a.
Nice radiate.
Agriculture, COVID, I mean, John, this is your expertise.
Well, I mean, it, it's almost like, if you think about like a parking lot is mostly impervious, but then they have, you know, you put some of this impervious where it can go through the parking lot, it's almost like that. I mean, it's, how big are the panels, like ten feet or something?
Yeah. And they're on a angle, and they're, they're only sitting in the ground with posts, and so it's, it's grass or whatever, whatever, it's not paved or trampled down. Um.
Something like, to me, it's just empirically, it's just don't know a lot, it's like coming off a roof, I know.
But you still have.
Rain lands off, it comes off.
Below that, there's still.
Grass.
Impervious area. Yeah, it's still, it's still, it's just going.
Both, I mean, there's a foundation stuff, but it's not like a parking lot going in.
It's going where it was going before, it's just, it's not, it's not, the problem with impervious surface is that it channels it to a spot through a catch basin and a pipe. And then that shoots out at, you know, high rate, causing erosion or causing, you know, this doesn't do that, it's just, the rain is still falling, and it's falling in that same spot, and it's just absorbing in the ground, or it's absorbing in the ground before. It's not collecting, the water's not, you know, shouldn't be, if it's collecting, they're doing something wrong.
Well, on the other hand, though, it could prevent the grass from growing.
Sure.
The rest of it. If the grass is a grown, then it's, you know.
This is a mini Ross and stuff.
Stuff the soil erosion.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I support it, if, if the grass dies, it, but it's still gonna absorb into the ground, just. But I haven't seen that for the, for this, I haven't seen that as a substantial issue.
So we know, it sounds like, based on what I'm hearing, that we would, Ross, we'd probably wanna exclude it out of FR. So it's not permitted use there, and then Doug, have you seen other townships amending?
Yeah, in fact, they gave us an example, I don't represent these communities, but, um, later on in this report from the county, they provide.
And they mentioned those in there, I just didn't know if you've been involved with any.
I have, I have.
Fresh ones that.
Uh, I've been involved in a couple of ordinances, but this is Marion, the example they gave is Marion Township and Hannon Township. And apparently did both of those, and, um, they did overlay districts, so they tried to concentrate them into certain parts of the township.
Most of the city, yeah.
Yeah, and that, the, the benefit of an overlay district is that you don't have to say solar is permitted in the Pyro District. You could say, or whatever district, you could say solar is permitted in this area that the township designates. And then that overlays on top of other zoning districts, you know, so it's not, you know, if you say, just like the agricultural district. That opens up the entire town, you don't wanna open up the entire township, so you won't, that's the benefit of overlay. And, uh, I think that's what the county was sort of giving as an example of something that could be a little more restrictive. I think one of the reasons that they wanna do that is if you read on page four here, where they get into some of the, hey. You allow this in Pyro, but you don't have any property currently zoned Pyro. I think adding the overlay district might reduce issues that may present themselves based on that. Because, you know, they are suggesting that, hey, we should, uh, potentially initiate some rezoning of lands to have Pyro districts. We need to kind of weigh how we wanna tackle this, because in our master plan, we're considering removing the Pyro District. And amending other zoning districts to accommodate those type of uses if they don't already exist.
Yeah, but we can't zone, we can just put it as a future land use, the township is.
We could initiate a.
You could do something.
Yeah, so we can.
We have to, yeah, we've done that for some PCI properties along Twenty Three, but for whatever reason, the township never, never even talked about that for Pyro. So that, that's a big discussion that we do need to have and determine, uh, because we could, you know, replace these Pyro districts with, say. M1 and 2 heavier industrial districts, which allow for some of the same uses as would Pyro B and C.
And what I would think, Ross, and from, for the point we're at in our process of master planning, and, is that. This is my thought, is remove the FR district from the current zoning ordinance that we have, that we're looking at. And then, once we have the master plan finished with the future land use map, then that would make sense that, hey, we removed it. Now this solar zoning needs to be amended to show current zoning district.
So amended now and then amended.
Yeah, because my, my thought is that we would mix these two issues, and then it would slow, they would both slow each other down. From actually happening, but that's just my, I don't know how you guys feel, but if they mix the two. Solar and the master plan, future land use map together, then they would both maybe drag on. Solar and the master plan, future land use map together, then they would both maybe drag on, right, cause how you're saying, Ross, is. Technically, we don't, we're trying to eliminate pyro and use some other zoning classification.
Which would require.
Which we would have to.
Again.
Put whatever that new classification is into this ordinance, right?
Yep. So we can do that, I mean, the the intent of this, the reason that we requested the, uh, courtesy review was just to make sure that, you know, everything's as. As tight, as neat as it can be right now, just in case a developer were to come in or a utility company were to come in and propose something. Um, we can always revisit it a later date, um, especially if we're gonna be changing our zoning designations. But while we're doing this, I still wanna try to go through and incorporate as many comments as you.
Yeah.
See fit, um, so beyond that topic, which is. Something that's gonna require a lot of discussion, um, something a little bit easier to swallow is, uh, the height. All they're suggesting is right now, we, uh, require that no mounting parts of the system, um, exceeds fifteen feet in height. They made a comment here that we should include a, an exception for, uh. Lightning rods, those sort of features that are necessary for these uses, um. Or would exceed fifteen feet, obviously, to be effective. So that's really the biggest thing that they're suggesting with that is, uh, to make sure that we account for. Specific features that need to exceed fifteen feet in height.
And on that one, Ross, I. I think, can't remember. I think there's somewhere in there, here where we say that they need to protect for. Lightning strikes, et cetera, I can't remember where it is in this.
Wonder if that's a general exception.
But it would make sense that we would waive that requirement for something of a safety related.
I would, I would just need to say that, that might just be a general exception for any use, you know, for any building, it should be, but it isn't, which is the coolest.
Yeah.
True, Ross. I don't think that there's any lightning. No mention of, no, here we go.
I don't know, says you should have that, plant, lighting protection measures.
Yep, we do have that, but it also says.
Doesn't say, it also says you can't be over fifteen, isn't it?
Yep, so just clarification on that, but yes, you do need to have that, and yes, that specific feature could exceed the fifteen feet.
Yeah, I guess the height of the, of the protection equipment, this is the solar energy system, so is that part of the system? That's pretty good into the.
Yeah, I mean, it is, um, but that's the only instance of lightning in zoning ordinance, uh, with the exception of definition of catastrophic event.
Yeah, yeah.
So for now, we may wanna incorporate that, but we should also keep it in mind that we might wanna consider that just in the zoning ordinance in general. To allow for an exception in height.
Oh, for other.
Yeah, for anything else that may require, um, lightning protection.
Most of their recommendations were spot on, as far as I was concerned, you know.
Yeah, I, I mean, they have some good points here, um. The next one is screening, basically they're requesting that, uh. We elaborate on that a little bit further and, and make it more descriptive, um, and they did include an example. So, um. I don't know what your thoughts are on the example, if you're okay with that as kind of a plug and play type thing, or if you wanted to modify that at all or ignore it.
I think this, what they've put in here is similar to some of the recent applications, what we've asked for, from applicants. Right, we've asked them to not have all one type of tree, you know, and.
Which we can do.
Different, so I think what they've recommended here is good, uh, my opinion, I don't know how you guys feel, but we've done this on a few different applications that have come to the planning commission.
Sounds like a good.
Yeah, we, we've done.
Okay, they have, they have.
Yeah, I agree. Or is it just.
Yeah, we didn't even have to pay them.
It doesn't say, it just, I think Ross. Yeah, no, that's where I think Ross, that was my point, Garrett, like, you could, you, it should still have that, the, up to the planning commission discretion.
For which.
The screen, right, so that way we don't lose that, because to Garrett's point, right, if they're. If you have a six foot high screen and the panels are.
Give me a, give me a twelve foot verne and then a six foot tree on top of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're always gonna see them.
We've done that for other places.
Yeah, well, uh, just as a special land use, which this falls under that category, the planning commission does have.
Yeah.
The, the ability to modify certain standards.
Yeah.
For, for all of them, including some of the, uh, specific design, uh, requirements for specific uses. Um, so we can include something like that, but it may not be necessary. Next big point here we have is, uh. Included in that, we have landscaping maintenance plan, uh, there's glare they comment, um. Township should require, um, that the applicant provide a glare study, which is not something that we currently require, and they do have some suggested language here. And I think as far as the definition for glare study.
Wise, right, it'll be a big part of the conversation if this becomes an application.
They talk about solar radiation just above that, but they don't highlight it in the comment.
Are we gonna have representative?
They're not coming here yet.
They're on their way.
Just making sure to cover all bases once they come. Okay, so batteries and equipment, um. Their recommendation is, uh, they recommend against permitting onsite battery storage for safety and welfare of local residents and emergency response personnel. So they, they kind of are suggesting that we. Allow for battery storage offsite is what I'm gathering. Don't fully.
Yeah, the only, only thing there, I think their recommendation seems like. It's wise, right, that it's not stored there, because it isn't a normal thing you deal with, that's whatever fire stations that, but. Does that mean then you have, well, how does it go offsite, do they have to run underground?
I, I don't know.
Not on that site, that'd be a whole other.
So they would have to run lines in and out.
Well, it just.
Do my adjustments.
Goes down the power lines and they'll store somewhere else.
Does anyway, they would just store it in a battery.
Yeah, yeah.
No, it just goes online, yeah.
I would think they wouldn't.
I don't think we want battery stores there, I was involved with something online, township, they had a battery facility there, they actually had, building, their building had these. Things that they could hook onto and drag the battery packs out of the building if they caught on fire, put them out in the parking lot, it was absolutely insane, even on. Fire suppression ain't a habit in this place, I don't think we wanna have anything to do with batteries.
So we wanna.
I agree.
Prohibit that.
Absolutely, yeah. Those lovely islands, they still.
Agree with your recommendation.
Very hard to put on.
Just bring your marshmallows.
Yeah, an eight hour fire.
Condos.
Or a three day fire.
A three day fire.
Okay, natural resource preservation, we do have, uh, some suggested language here, which will require an environmental impact analysis. Which, you know, I assume everyone would be on board with.
Yeah, I agree.
Then they also make a comment here, other types of analysis, um, beyond the ones listed there, uh, may be a benefit to the township. Have been utilized in other, um, ordinances, they have a suggestion here for a wildlife impact analysis. So I think, uh, we wanna talk about how you feel about that.
Seems like, I guess, I guess maybe could differentiate, but it seems like it would be part of that.
Not, not necessarily.
It's kind of, it's different, yeah.
Yeah, it's a little bit above and beyond the typical environmental effect. Um, so they do have a number of recommendations there, um, in addition to the wildlife, uh, they also have. Provision of manufacturer's safety data sheets onsite. Documentation that shall include the type and quantity of all materials used in the operation of all equipment. Um, I assume that's part of what we would want included in the use statement, but adding this language would just kind of reinforce that. What do you think about that, huh?
Agreed.
Fire suppression plan, I don't think there's gonna be any opposition to that, I think that's very important, you know. Uh, construction schedule, that's likely something that would be covered, but it wouldn't necessarily hurt to include it if you think that's a good idea.
What about the actual construction of these panels being put in the ground, I know you said these poles just go in the ground. Like, are we talking concrete pads, or are we talking, you know, like, are these, I mean, these are fifteen feet tall, ten feet, I'm guessing they're fairly thin. Kind of, you know, like, is wind an issue with this, I mean, are, I mean, we get heavy winds around here sometimes, are these things just gonna take flight like a bike and?
Should be designed by a structural engineer.
That's what I'm getting at, like, they should be in concrete, you know, so they, I mean, we get some pretty good winds around here. I mean, you gotta think about it, you get your summertime storms, then you got panels flying everywhere.
Review back.
Yeah, alright.
And that, that goes on to.
I didn't know if wind should be a study, I mean, we're talking about impacts from.
I think there's, there's standards for that, which, you know, would be reviewed through Livingston County to verify compliance, um. And the, the next point here is permits from the road commission and, uh, MDOT. To connect access roads to existing county roads, I don't see why we would not ask for that, like, that's pretty important. Obviously, those entities need to be involved because they have jurisdiction over that. So they would have to regardless, but it doesn't hurt for us to include that in those standards as well. The next one, a complete set of photos and video of the entire development area prior to construction. For historical documentation, so the township can secure and refer to once the time comes for decommissioning and redevelopment as agricultural or.
Decommissioning.
That's an interesting one, what are your thoughts on that?
That's what they do when they do like road construction, you see those guys going down the road, they video take the roads. Come back to make sure that, you know.
I'm asking you how fun it is.
To me, it's good, it's very simple.
More than a couple of hours. I, I could say every recommendation so far.
Yeah, I don't see anything that they're, they're just, they're just good, once they cover it up.
And with drone, with drones, you get so easy to just. Um, okay, moving on to drainage and stormwater, uh, which we talked about a little bit, um, we do have some standards here. Uh, they made a comment that to ensure compliance with the provision, township should require that the applicant or developer provide a stormwater study. So just an additional study that would be required in this type of development. And we do have a recommended language here as far as.
The county, the county drain commissioner probably be involved in that too.
Oh, yeah. I have a question, it sounds like county's already got a pretty good idea of what they wanna see, is there a study that has been done and we can maybe get a copy of, to see what it looks like?
I'm sure we can.
If you can get one and send it to us, just to read through it.
Yeah, you can find out, um, specifically like environmental.
If they were gonna say another, another area, what, what they, what they presented, just so we can read through it.
Is, is there example, like, I guess, simple question, is there others in the, in the.
Yes.
County? We're saying the far northwest.
Or another county.
We're saying township in the far northwest.
There's a huge, huge proposal going on right now in Conway and Coquettot, and it's huge.
There's a huge field of them somewhere around here.
And there is as well.
Down by, uh, Montfortane, uh, where the highways all merged, they got them all along the highway.
But the Conway one right now is.
But it exists. Proposal, you know.
So an application.
Yeah. It'd just be worthwhile reading through it, cause I'm especially interested in this wrong thing, it doesn't make sense that it's not gonna be. Close to be said gravel driveway. A gravel paving surface, where you got some grass in here.
Oh, wait, we're saying that they need to provide a study.
Yeah.
And we'll see what the site says.
Point four CFs or something.
I don't know, they say they gotta hire engineers to do the study. And, and to not require engineered solutions, so it just drains in naturally.
We got a lot of hard playground going on here too, so. If it, if the, like, grass ain't gonna grow, then it's gonna run off.
Ross, the only thing, I think, most of their, it sounds like we agree with what the county recommended. Only question I had is on, um, fencing.
Good.
Is that addressed, I don't know if I missed it.
Um, I, we have screed, there's landscaping and screening requirements for, for buffering, um, as far as actual fencing goes, let's see.
How do you imagine fencing in the middle of people walking around?
Cause that, you know, I don't know.
Okay, so.
Should be secured site. Secured site, is that how they say it, okay.
Oh, is it, no, I didn't, I didn't read that.
I was just trying to see.
That's my belief.
It should be, yeah.
Twelve foot fences. Fire wall, you wanna keep deer, you wanna keep deer out of there. Deer, we're not getting deer in there, that might make some damage.
I know the one on ninety-six, off of ninety-six, wants to know why, there's always deer in there, the grass is fine underneath, and they have to mow it.
Okay.
It's a DTE, it, I think it's an advertisement basically for DTE, it's not a huge one.
It looks like.
But it's. But there's always, but the, the thing I'm concerned with is you have, you create an area for this right to be. Hey, kids, whatever, play in there.
So, yeah, i- in regards to fencing, it does state in their recommended, uh, text here for screening vegetation that, uh. In lieu of planting a green belt or decorative, um, in lieu of planting a green belt, a decorative fence that is at least fifty percent opaque and meets the requirements of the ordinance, applicable to fences may be. Used if approved by the planning mission.
Yeah, so that's for screening, that's for security. And it would be optional, but I, I think it's something that either we can just.
But I think, yeah, it's part of special land use.
Yeah, or.
Yeah. Makes sense.
The best part's on, uh, it's the last page here anyway, says we can get a grant for up to twenty-five grand.
There's a.
Or rewriting, or managing the re, uh, renewables and sending postcards to residents for planning processes, support for public meetings and stuff like that. We gotta go there. Another two months to get that.
Couldn't we get that in? Legitimately.
Well, instead of paying, paying out of our pocket, paying the consultants and, uh, almost for this.
You're already.
Well, just.
Play that for.
Draft. Uh, I'm.
And I think one.
That's what they're saying, right?
Yeah, but, I don't know.
I, I was reading, I kind of missed that last point.
Second to last page, it says you can get a grant for up to twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, we got anybody that writes grants that, uh, works here?
You should.
I bet you should give us a good example, right there, Jessica Crawford.
And it's four.
Jessica Crawford.
Four renewables.
Well, no, but we may.
High we are.
We're written, this work, this, if they wanna do this, here's the requirements.
Yeah.
I mean, it's.
We've got.
Ross, I don't see any.
And, and also in here, everything that says, um, for your legal piece and all that, that's, that, that can go to our legal page, that's paying the lawyer to review all this out of our pocket.
That is.
Someone's gonna give us full of professional expenses, it makes sense.
Saying we have a party after what's been done.
Ross, do you have any? Questions for Ross?
I mean, if you guys are okay with this, you just kind of like create a draft with all of these recommendations incorporated.
That's fair, yeah.
I'd have heard of myself.
Yeah, I think, I like. I, I would, I would say that's the best option, and, and because. Our ordinance is, is good how it is, but it, some of these things that would make it more specific and without.
Well, and yeah, there's some, there's some things, options they said, like the overlay, or just if we eliminate FR, is that what we want, or we think that's, that's good enough?
Both.
About, what you're thinking overlay.
I think an overlay is something that we we will wanna consider.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Overlay, we can say we want it here or not here.
Yeah. I I think we should do a, I, 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 we both, put it where we want it.
Well, if we do the overlay, then we'll just draw it where.
Yeah. But, is that good enough? Is an overlay, is an overlay sufficient? You don't need, you don't need to, okay, then, then fine.
Then I would recommend if that's, that's the route that we wanna take, then we should probably have Arlo Orman put something together for that, because we don't have any existing overlay districts and I don't have a whole lot of experience with that.
Don't, do you guys write grants? I mean, is this something you guys could write for us, if you're for us?
We 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 do help communities write grants, mostly for recreational kind of stuff, but but we've not done a lot of these grants. But, yeah, we've got a guy in staff that does, that's done grants.
We got sixty days, maybe to get this in, but you could see, I don't know, the the money may not even be there, I mean, you.
It's real, the money always get there.
How much does it cost?
But it doesn't cost us anything to ask.
So the. Yeah, it costs right, it costs right to grant almost.
Twenty five grand. Hey, cost us guys twenty three or four grand.
So. Yeah, and sold the overlay district.
You got, if we did that.
If that helps.
No, in in a realistic situation, how long would that take to get done?
Well, the the, so, the standards that, the way I understand it, the standards that you, that the county's given you a comment on, you're all pretty good with that, you're good with that. And so, this would just, in in essence, this language would become an overlay district standards. So then the only thing we have to really discuss is where the overlay is gonna be, that's the big issue. So the language looks pretty good, everyone's in gr- in grimm of the language, but in association with language, you would reference, you know, the the overlay district map, that would end up in your zone limits. And so, that would be where a lot of the discussion would occur, is where do we, if we're taking it out of the ag zone, where are we gonna focus this, or do you wanna focus? And you see, there's a couple examples at the end of this document that the county provided, that shows two examples, one, as I mentioned before, one in Handy and one in Marion, that provides, you know, two, two examples of how you can do that.
So the grant money that's available is basically for legal review or whoever's gonna write the grant and all that kind of stuff. Publication in the newspaper and previewed to public hearing.
Final expense.
So if we did an overlay district, my my concern there is.
We're not gonna have area.
Is if we, if we wait to define that area and maybe it takes us three months, depending on what happens at the next few meetings, or we, you know, we don't know, that then we still are open in the FR zoning district for an application.
Yep.
The whole time we work on it, that's, you know.
It costs two separate drafts.
So that that was.
We could suspend.
Moratorium.
Applications.
Yep.
As long as there's none on the table, right? Which I don't believe we would have heard about it.
So that might, that might be something we wanted to.
Maybe overlay, that would buy us a little.
Or until we complete the revisions to this ordinance.
Can you vote on that tonight?
You you could suspend.
No.
This is a workshop.
Okay.
Ninety days.
Alright, great.
And renew it for another ninety days.
That's a great suggestion.
Now, the other thing with the overlay is then when you gotta say, here's where we would want it, and now, i- i- where are we gonna put that is gonna be outside of FR? You know, where would we want?
Kind of the old pyro, I'm thinking?
No, but that that's almost the reason to have an overlay, because, I mean, that was kind of your reasoning to to have an overlay, because if you exclude it from FR, the only place really with large parcels is is in the pyro area.
Yeah, which is all zoned FR currently. I mean, for these, there would need to be rezonings, whether if you buy the applicant or the township initiating rezonings, or if you go with the overlay route, you wouldn't necessarily need to go through the rezoning process, and it may cover some FR land, but it would be area that is identified by the township as appropriate for that type of use. You you would still go through a rezoning, because a a overlay is a rezoning, it's it's a district. Yeah. But if you're impacting, sorry, I have to say that, you you you, it's still rezoned.
Okay. So in in essence, I think Kurt's recommendation maybe is wise, right, from a, to have a moratorium on it.
Yeah, that's something I think.
I I think would be wise, so that way we don't.
That's not something that.
You know, tonight we can't do, but I think it should be.
That's something that.
The board has to.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, yeah. We we would re, do we have to request any regular rating, or can we?
Board can initiate.
We just, okay.
The board, the board's got meeting next to it.
From this workshop, or can you recommend to the board from?
We just tell Kurt, send it up to the board.
Yeah, that's just a request, we, it's not.
That's why. Down here, yeah.
Alright?
Yeah.
Typically, you would have the township attorney kind of help draft that language.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Could be for a certain, like, six months, you could do like a six month moratorium, and you have to have a reason for the moratorium, and the reason would be that we're initiating discussions to, you know, and ordinance, and upon, you know, upon adoption, new ordinance and moratorium lifted, you know, something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good. Yeah, I think that's a, a wise one for us, as homework would be, hey, where where would be the overlay district for all of yous to think at in local. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
They're gonna. Hey, so, any other questions on, from the board for the solar facilities? For tonight?
That's what you do.
Any other guidance you need, Ross?
I could work.
Lot of discussion, but make sure you're all set. Okay, any new business, Ross?
Ross, do you have any? That covers it.
So, okay, we'll go to call to the public.
Alright, Scott.
Alright, I got a couple things to talk about here. First of all, you guys are mentioning, Ross was saying something about going, taking a pyro to heavy industrial, we were wanting to have, because I think we were discussing about that, what about asphalt plants and stuff? Is that heavy industrial? I don't know, but.
Yes.
We gotta be careful about that one. Alright, you guys are permitted, you gotta, I want you to be up to date, you are, Kurt. Gentleman said the other day, with the woodworking down there in Sun River, that's gonna be falling under the home occupation. He mentioned that.
That already is.
That's agricultural, it's special land use.
He's already got it.
He has a home occupation.
Okay, fine, of course, so he's running up the home occupation now, that's fine, okay. He's talking about having events now. In events, he's talking about vendors, and we really need to narrow down. It's more of a. I don't think it's right to have one person have a right to do business on a property and bring other people who sell the products there, in a residential area. I mean, it's, he's got a lot of highway down there, there's a lot of houses, and I know a lot of those people down there, were really up in arms over the barn there on the corner having the weddings. And I talked to one of the guys after we had the meeting, and he's gonna put the word out, like I said, I hope that, I don't know if he's gonna be down there or not. My other big thing is, we have him here, I mean, is, you talk about a sawmill, and he's got thirty five acres. He's only got so much wood there. He's talking about bringing more wood from woodlands he claims are his. Come on. Realistically, does it, is it really his, or is he buying a launch from somebody else? We don't know. But I'm, that that kind of operation, he's bringing trucks in with hogs, we gotta make sure that that goes into an industrial area. Not a, you know, it's gotta go in a complex where he's running a sawmill. He's got a lot of house, I don't care if he's got insulated walls, he's, they have a lot of noise over there, trucks coming in and out, all on the block, because they take a big truck. So I mean, you guys are gonna have that coming to you. But I really am worried about people having a business in their place and just having an event and having everybody else come ring a town and sell them, and goal there is right to to do business there, and we need to stop, okay? Uh, let's see. I think that's all I got, so I appreciate it.
Thanks, Scott.
Uh, Jennifer, Peta, full of drive. Um, so, that was the ordinance then, right? That you were talking about Steve, that we needed, last, last meeting, wasn't it you that said that we need to tighten it up right away? Anyway, that's the ordinance, having to do, that you would be.
Solar facilities. Yeah, what what's in there is our ordinance with staff comments from the courtesy.
Okay, those courtesy reviews. Okay, cool. Um, I figured it was, I just wanted to make sure that that covered the whole thing. Um, so, two points I was gonna ask you guys to consider tonight, and one of them, um, well, first of all, there's several Michigan communities that have put up moratoriums, so you guys know that, and that was what I was gonna ask you to do, and some of them are for over a year long, and they're still going on. So I would hope that you go for the max, because, um, we need to really make sure that we get this down good, and this would, um, this would trigger a public hearing, would it not? Okay. Um, also, there are Michigan communities, I know we heard this last week, where we were told, no, you can't refuse this. There are several Michigan communities out there that have flat out said no, no solar, utility scale solar, and they're not being sued, and they've said no. So if you want, I can do that research for you guys, but I hope you would look it up. And did, did you, any of you guys look at, um, the information that I think her first name was Stephanie, that she's, um, provided to you guys? Okay, so I looked at that also. Um, also, on the weekend, I took a drive out to Cohacta and Conway Townships, and I spoke with a couple residents and business owners out there. Um, their communities are covered with no solar. Uh, it kind of gave me nightmares, it reminded me of the asphalt plant thing here, but their communities are covered with these signs. So I asked them about the current plan, and I don't know if you guys know, but it's fifteen hundred acres. And do you know how much fifteen hundred acres is? That's two and a half square miles basically, covered. Now, do we have that here? And that was the the big thing that was said last week too, don't worry, we don't have that. No, we don't have that. But that, that's not the point, that they string pieces of land together, so we know that that's something that happens. Um, it's farmland that's gone forever, it's an eyesore that people have to look at, it doesn't matter how high you make these fences, and it's that you still come up over hills and you see all of this, so fine. Um, but, um, what the residents told me was, they felt like they're being forced into this, and that their leadership did not do enough to prevent it from happening. And now they're finding out and seeing other places that are saying no, and it's perfectly fine to say no. Um, so anyway, you guys might say, well, we don't have two and a point five acres of vacant land, we do have a lot of land that can be linked together, and I honestly believe that we're in danger of this. Now, a lot of people think that this is fine, to have this kind of development. Um, again, the person that handed you the piece of paper last week, there was some very interesting things in those videos, and they were by industry well-respected scientists. And the environmental concerns are enormous, and as I kind of shouted out, they talk a little bit about the radiation here, they're not telling you about the radiation here. You gotta look into this, this is incredible.
That comment was, is in the current ordinance, that radiation portion.
Yeah.
It's in the current ordinance, just so you know.
What does it say?
It's it's about restricting the solar radiation.
Okay, how do they restrict it?
No, it was just in.
It's very vague.
It's very vague, but good point, it just wanted to let you know that's where it is.
Alright, so, um, we need to look at that, the environmental, um, look, we all have kids, grandkids here, thi- this is, this is so bad. Okay, so the environmental concerns, um, also, let's just even think of the humanity concerns, okay? And and this brings me to the kids. Amnesty International says, the marketing of these state of the art technologies are stark contrast to the children carrying rocks in bags, and that is a fact, that is happening, not in our country, but it's happening in other countries, and I care about those kids too. And they they're working to fulfill what we want, this is not good. The economic concerns, um, again, look at the world's biggest battery factory, Tesla, in Nevada. It would take five hundred years for that factory to make enough batteries to store just one day's worth of America's electricity needs. And so, we've been having this push for wind and solar for twenty years, billions of dollars of subsidies, and we're still only at three percent because it's not working and it's not viable. So, these facts, just a couple that I mentioned, I don't really tip the iceberg. Um, if any proposals come our way and the township feels like they have to consider them, I think that there's gonna be a big force to reckon with with the public. And I know you all remember the asphalt plant, um, fight, and we floundered a bit at the beginning, but we were successful. And if you thought you saw signs then, you're gonna see them, you'll see them for something like this, people do not want this. Um, I do believe that many of us agree on this, I know you guys know what the economic, the environmental, and the humanity type, um, the the things that are wrong with doing this. I also know that you know, many of you on the commission, are aware of the myths that are being pushed down our throat about fossil fuels, that they're bad, that they're gonna run out. I know a lot of you know that, so I hope this commission can also be kind of that vessel to help educate people. We don't need this, and it's being pushed down our throat, not by you guys, but I'm saying by government, by state, whoever's doing this pushing, there is money in it for someone, and it's horrible, horrible stuff, take a look at the radiation effects from this stuff, you do not want this coming to our township. So, um, I hope you'll look into it more, I will do some more research and I'll I'll put together some links and stuff, I will send them to you, Rich, and if you would, it's very, I appreciate it.
Alright, thank you. Do you guys, do you have an extra copy that hand out your reference from last week?
Um.
This, this is.
Oh, that was good?
Yeah. Okay, any other public comment? Alright, see none, any miscellaneous business? Oh, alright.
Said, everybody.
We're done. Thank you, guys.